Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting, and city council meeting only. This meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno? Ruby? Kilburg?
Here.
Casarag?
Here.
Maladra? Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask Derek Johnston and Andrew Shad to please lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our first order of business this evening, item 3A, is to host some promotions at the fire department for Lieutenant Derek Johnston and Lieutenant Andrew Shad. First up, our friend, Mr. Johnston. Mr. Johnson, please join us at the podium. And first thing you do is introduce the throngs of people who are here with you, and don't, if you forget anybody, we can always edit the tape.
Yeah, no, both my parents are here, Gary and Sharon Johnston, my grandmother, my Aunt Lori, and her son, my sister, and my niece, and my girlfriend Nikki. That's it.
Life is good.
Yeah, they're all right.
Life is good. We're glad you're here as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
From Shenahan, Illinois.
Yes, sir.
And you have in parentheses, "one hour south of Geneva."
It's a ride.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
But you currently live in St. Charles.
Absolutely, yep.
You actually included your birth date, but I'm not going to share that.
That's fine.
Okay? Because it's depressing.
I don't know what to respond to that.
Born on January 20th, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Fun fact, this is, you put this together, didn't you?
I did, yeah.
Have a little man on the way with partner in crime, Nikki. Congratulations!
Yep.
Isn't that exciting? May I ask, Nikki, what do you do?
May 20th.
Wow, no microphone needed there.
Yeah, it's like that at home, too, so...
And you know it's going to be a little boy?
Yes.
And do you, do not share, but do you have names picked out?
Uh, we're down to probably two or three.
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's exciting as heck, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's busy, it's coming on fast.
It is coming on fast. And, uh, the, again, in your words, "The little man will be born where?"
At Delnor.
At Delnor?
Yep.
That's pretty exciting, man. And is there a text string going out, so when the little man arrives, we can all come over?
Uh, if you want to come over, I can work on this, yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Do you have my cell?
Uh, I might, actually.
That's what worries me.
I could, yeah.
Wow, congratulations, congratulations, Nikki.
Thank you.
Providence Catholic High School in beautiful New Lenox, Illinois. I'm going to give away your age, you graduated class of 2015.
Uh, minus 10 years.
Wait, 2005?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it says 15.
It was a mispronounce.
I was going to say, you look like hell. It's like, I was like... We'll edit that tape, Marissa. 2005?
Yes.
Sorry, Madam Clerk.
I got it.
Louis University in Romeoville.
Yep.
Great school. Do you stay in touch with Louis University?
No. Great school, I'm...
I'm glad you enjoyed your time.
I haven't gone back, they ain't got much to go back for, so...
My buddy from college is their president.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Dr. Livingston.
Okay.
As you know, they have a great flight school.
They do.
They have a very good flight school. You earned your Bachelor of Arts in Sports Management.
I did.
In 2012. Sports management to firefighting.
Yeah, pretty much the same line.
Yeah?
Yep, so...
Do you want to explain that trajectory?
No, I, uh, in high school, in college, I played baseball through college.
Hold on, what position?
I was a catcher.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
How are the knees, man?
Uh, knees are okay, shoulders not so good.
Not so good?
Yeah, so, um, after that, uh, stopped going to school for a little bit, got a couple of jobs, ended up going back, found a career that I really loved. Loved sport management, worked professional baseball for a minute.
Well, wait, back up. You worked professional baseball for a minute?
Yeah.
What did you do in professional baseball?
Community relations.
For?
Um, just Tampa Bay Rays, one of their affiliate teams.
How cool is that?
Worked down there, the July Slammers, a couple of other minor league teams around here, so...
Really?
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah.
Still had that itch to be around the sport?
Yeah, yeah. They forgot to tell me that, uh, you got to work about 100 hours a week, and they only pay about $35,000 a year, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't really get you anywhere.
It's like being a firefighter, really.
Yeah, slightly.
Do they pay you that much?
What's that?
What?
Huh?
So, you still love the sport?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, this was just something I always wanted to get into in the first place.
So you always, firefighting is always something you wanted?
Yeah, from the aspect of, um, like I said, I played, I was an athlete, played sports, did things as a team, and it was a way for me to always give back. And I remember my dad, early on when I was a kid, um, I always asked, hey, how do I make a difference, but also financially provide for a family?
Sure.
And this is one of the few careers that are out there that allow you to make a difference to the community, still go to work and have a team environment, and be able to work with the family, both at work and then provide for the family at home, so gave me basically everything I wanted in a career, so...
That's pretty cool. And of course, I should single out Dad, who, uh, served our nation in the Navy, was stationed in Japan. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
You've been with us, Derek, for five and a half years.
Yeah.
And all is well?
Yeah, yeah, busy, it's gone, uh...
It is busy, isn't it?
Yeah, staying, like, five and a half years feels like it's flown by.
Isn't that something?
And, yeah, it's crazy how I've gotten here from the time that it's only been five and a half years, so, but...
Now, you qualified to drive the big rigs?
Yeah, it's pretty much all I did, yeah, after about six, seven months. Um, yeah, there's an expectation there that you drive those, so, yeah.
And just, just purely out of curiosity, when you're driving on Canville Road, you guys go fast, man, it's like...
Yeah, we look for people we know, and then we make sure it honks along.
Yeah, I know, and you scare the, you literally gave me massive seizures once you guys were honking, I was mowing the lawn, I thought...
Yeah, we probably saw you, it was like, oh, there he is.
Yeah, and then I have a DNR, so keep going, it was good. Previously worked for Manuka, and that's how you pronounce it?
Correct.
Correct. And East Moline, that's fascinating, man.
Yeah.
What took you out to East Moline, just opportunity?
Um, so I got this career a little bit later, um, I think I was 29 when I started approaching it. Uh, by the time I was 30, 31, finished up med school, and East Moline was the first full-time career opportunity that I had.
Oh, is that right?
So with being a firefighter, you have to be hired by the time you're 35, and I just wanted to start my clock. So it was the first opportunity, stayed out there for a period of time, and it was, uh, the people there were great, um...
It's a neat place, the Quad Cities is a neat place.
Yeah, yeah, it was really cool, we had some crazy calls out there, and it's a unique atmosphere, for sure, um, but my family was here, so...
Did you have a mutual aid system with all the Quad Cities?
We did.
So on occasion, you had to go to Iowa?
Um, I mean, we did not, so we stayed mostly, everything was on the side of the border, we worked with those, yeah.
Wow. Coordinator of the Water Rescue Operations.
Mm-hmm.
You've, you've, you've had your hands full over the years.
Yeah, yeah, been trying to stay busy, trying to do as much as I can, so...
Yeah. And coordinator of public education programs.
Mm-hmm.
Share what all that's about.
Um, so basically, we have a couple of community opportunities that we work with kids, we go to schools, we communicate with them, we teach them fire prevention, we have a risk watch program, we started a winter program and winter camp this year, um, we're trying to do a couple of other things, working with the library, um, trying to do some reading opportunities with them during the summer, and then just still trying to grow, so it's a great way to get out and meet the kids, and, uh, just fire prevention, so...
And when the kids, I know the risk watch program involves our police officers as well.
Yeah.
So when, when the, when the young'uns see you and the cops, who do they prefer to be when they grow up?
Uh, I think it's Officer Parisi.
Yes, it is.
Um, I don't know why, I think it's...
Is, is Parisi here tonight?
Yeah, he's always around.
He is always around.
Yeah, I, yeah, he's great, I guess.
I guess?
Yeah.
It's been a quick five and a half years for you, Derek, thank you for joining us. Your hobbies and interests include family time, which will, of course, accelerate once the little man arrives.
Yeah.
Outdoors, including fishing and boating.
Mm-hmm.
And where do you fish and boat?
Uh, I like to spend a lot of time up in Wisconsin whenever I can, it's pretty up there, it's quiet.
Way up north, or...
Um, historically, just considering it's so close, like Geneva, Delavan, spots like that, but if I can go up further north, um, which I don't know if I'll have opportunities to in the future, but, yeah, the further north I can go, the nicer and the more serene it is, so...
Yeah, it really is pretty, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Amazing. Do you have your own boat?
I do.
What kind of boat do you have?
A little bass boat, a little 21 footer, so...
Bass boat?
Yeah.
That was a bass boat.
Get bass off.
You get bass off, okay. And you like traveling?
I do.
And Nikki, I assume you like traveling as well?
I do.
And where do you like to travel to?
Um, I stay pretty close to the Midwest, um, I mean, we'll go to Michigan, Wisconsin, we'll go down to Tennessee and Missouri and stuff. She travels a little bit further, um, so...
Oh, it's nice, you don't travel together, that's nice, that's...
No, she bails on me sometimes.
Oh, she's very smart.
Yeah.
So, and when you're traveling, you're enjoying the outdoors?
Absolutely.
So, the camping and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, we do a camping trip every year, um, I spend a lot of time outdoors in general, so, yeah.
That's cool. That's very cool. Firefighting is a calling. Is it a calling that you personally did not answer for a while, or that you always knew you would answer, but you wanted to take your time to make certain it was right for you?
Um, so, I mean, you talked to my parents, uh, early on, it was, like I said, it was a conversation that I always had, probably through high school and stuff, um, and it was always an interest where it was, I didn't know how I was going to do it, I was going to make a difference, or make a change, or be there for somebody, um, and I think I was probably 29, and, like I said, I would just try not to figure out where I was with my life, and what I was going to do next, and my best friend came up to me, and was like, hey, man, you're getting old. I was like, because they got that timeframe, they got that timeframe, 35, and it takes time to get a job like this.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, it was one of those things where it's like, you just put your head down, and you kind of, you made the attempt, and you went for it, so, it, it was scary at the time, I mean...
Oh, I bet.
To change up your life, quit everything that you're doing, and restart, but, I mean, I'm, I'm happy I did it, obviously, so...
Well, we're happy you did it as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And we're delighted that you're part of the team here.
Yeah.
It's very exciting for the promotion tonight, very exciting. Uh, does the council have any comments or questions for Mr. Johnston? Are you ready to have the oath administered?
Loved it, yep, absolutely.
You are welcome to invite anyone you'd like to join you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And we're going to do it right here.
Perfect.
Sound good?
Thank you, yeah.
(Inaudible)
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 (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) Ladies and gentlemen, uh, on the screen is alderperson Mike Bruno, joining us, so forgive me for not recognizing that earlier.
No, I got a late start, sorry.
No, but I just, I just, I just... I believe it's pronounced "Shad," Andrew Shad. Why aren't you sitting with the family, Andrew?
I didn't want to split sides, they're on, they're on both sides.
Hmm. Oh, so you're better than Derek, you have more, huh? How you doing?
I'm all right, a little hot.
Okay, Shad, you wrote this, correct?
Yeah, it's a long one.
It, it's kind of, yeah, it's like... Grew up in Geneva, graduated from Geneva Community High School in 2007, so you had my brother as a teacher?
I never had him, no.
So you were held back. Where I took fire science through Fox Valley Career Center at Canlin High School. My gut tells me you knew what you wanted to do.
Uh, I had a good idea, and then that was the first year fire science was offered, um, so I took that, and right away, I fell in love with it, knew that's what I wanted to do.
Was it something you took because you thought, well, that'd be kind of cool, or did you, were you testing yourself to see if you really liked it?
I know I had the interest in it.
Okay.
So that was a good transition into it.
That is pretty cool. Now, this is really cool, you graduated in 2007, hired by the Geneva Fire Department in 2008 as a paid-on-call firefighter. You know what's really cool? I just met one of the paramedics who graduated in 2021. He's over there somewhere, we don't let those young people in the building.
Yeah.
Isn't that something?
Uh, it's, it's getting to that point where we're realizing tables are turning a little bit, sitting there on shift, and being 35 years old, being the oldest one there, is a little different.
Amazing, isn't it? After obtaining your paramedic license in 2015, you worked on the ambulance contract for St. Charles for approximately three years.
Yeah, in 2012.
Oh, forgive me, 2012.
Mm-hmm.
Chief, did you print this up? Who made all the, who made all the boo-boos on this thing?
Just made it bigger.
It's one demerit for the chief. While testing at different departments for a full-time position, and that testing thing is unusual.
Yeah.
Could you explain that to folks? It's got to be, it's got to be anxiety-producing.
It's so different now, um, you know, it's not as simple as just applying for a, for a job, so departments have to carry an eligibility list, um, good for two years normally, and then, but you have to, you have to test to get on it, so you have to normally go to an orientation, and they just tell you what everything's about, um, then you take the written test, and if you pass that, if they're hiring, you'll go on through interview, psych, background, polygraph, all of that, um...
Polygraph?
Yeah, so when I first started testing, there wasn't much hiring going on, that's why, it took years of testing.
Is that right?
I mean, you'd go to a test, and it'd be 300 guys for maybe one position.
Wow.
And now it's, it's 20 guys for four positions.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's changed a bit.
Is that just because of the demographic? That there's, you know, old people like you at 35, or...
Well, I think there's a lot more positions opening up.
Okay.
But then, I don't know if it's a generational thing, not as much interest in, in the job, I'm not sure, but I know a strong contract will always help those numbers get higher, so...
Of course.
That's something to aim for.
(Laughter) Now, as I understand it, you had a, maybe it's a moment of weakness, but you live in Batavia now, is that correct?
Yeah, I do.
You were hired in Elburn.
Yep.
But shortly thereafter, Geneva came a calling.
Correct.
So walk us through that, "Hey, Elburn, it's been a slice, however, I'm heading east."
Yeah, so I got, I was working in St. Charles at the time, like, like you mentioned, on the ambulance.
Right.
Um, I got the phone call for the unofficial conditional offer for Elburn, um, they were just doing some planning, more or less, they wanted to ask me when a good time was to start.
Oh, wow.
Um, I mentioned, my wife and I were actually going on vacation, we were leaving in like three days for a week, and they said, oh, that's, you know, that's perfect, if you want to start after that, you know, it's a Friday to Friday, if you want to start that following Monday, then, great, it's like, okay, excellent. Um, first day, we get down in Florida, I get the same phone call, only from Chief Olson for a unofficial conditional offer, so, but he knew I was starting in Elburn, but just wanted to give me time to think about it, so...
Wow.
Um, started...
So you're Mr. Unconditional?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, so started in Elburn, um, knowing I wanted to be here, but didn't want to jeopardize a for-sure thing, position-wise, because I still had to go through the process here, um, so Chief Olson was great about getting the companies to be flexible and helping me out, because I was doing days in Elburn.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I still had to go through my psych, poly, background check, um, did all those after shift days in Elburn, so...
Did you do your psych, poly, and, and whatever the heck you said, in Elburn already?
Yes, you have to do it every time.
But you do it here as well?
Correct. So I ended up doing nine days of days in Elburn, and then came here.
No kidding? Wow. Are you allowed in Elburn anymore, or are you...
Yes, left, left on good terms.
Yeah, of course, Elburn's a great community, great community. Now, I'm assuming this is accurate, I believe it is, May of 2015 is when you joined us full-time?
Yes.
Wow. That's, that's nine years, man. It's been quick.
Yeah, it is.
That's something. Nora is here tonight, welcome, Nora, we're delighted to have you, and soon-to-be Lieutenant Shad, would you like to introduce all those who are here to celebrate you?
Okay.
Or, or just those you like?
Yeah, no, uh, so I'm, I was happily surprised, I have aunts and uncles, all my aunts and uncles from both sides of the family, um, close family friends here, and then...
High school buddies and...
Uh, no, no high school buddies made it, um, and then, like I said, close family friends, um, one of my sisters was able to make it with my nephew, um, my other two sisters couldn't make it, and then my wife surprised me, uh, my best friend from northern Wisconsin, the gentleman in the floral shirt.
Look at that!
Uh, he drove six hours down to, to be here tonight, and I'm just coincidentally going up there Friday, so...
Where in northern Wisconsin?
Three Lakes.
Ah, yes.
I think I got everybody.
Yeah, double, double-check, 'cause...
Yeah, we're good.
We're good, you're good? Your message to the next generation regarding the, the world of firefighting?
Yeah, um, I think it's a unique career to get in, from the, the standpoint of, uh, you can never really master it, you can only just keep getting better, there's so many classes, so many certifications, you can spend a whole career going through everything, so, um, always try and do that, don't just get comfortable in one position, just always challenge yourself, and keep trying to better yourself.
And forgive me for not knowing this, but are you, are you assigned, Lieutenant, are you assigned to a particular shift as well, whether it be gold, or...
Yep.
And, Johnson, what, what, where are you assigned?
Uh, red shift.
Red shift, and you are?
Uh, I'm black.
Black shift, okay.
Yeah, so I'm tomorrow.
So you're tomorrow, so nothing big planned for this evening?
Nothing at all, no.
Maybe you had a little...
Going to get a good night's rest, probably, and that's it.
Maybe, maybe, maybe you had a little lull, or something?
No.
I didn't say anything. Did you catch that one?
Uh, I did.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
You are welcome to invite anyone you'd like, if you are ready for the oath to be administered.
Yeah, uh, my wife, Nora, and both my parents, you know, mine.
Fantastic. (Inaudible) I ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Shad.
I, Andrew Shad.
Having been promoted to the position of Lieutenant.
Have been promoted to the position of Lieutenant.
In the city of Geneva.
City of Geneva.
County of Kane, Naforsen.
County of Kane, Naforsen.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant.
To the best, appointed to the best in my, my position. I heard the pagers going off, everything good?
We're not worried about it, of course.
That's Batavia.
Yeah, it actually is.
Yeah, look, look, right here in front of the, in front of the seat.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Can I get my union rep to look this over real quick?
Yeah, it's actually so good, our workers want to go.
Yeah.
Since the damn thing was taken away.
All right, thank you.
If anyone needs to leave, by all means, you're free to.
So I think Bruno probably liked my, we were being re-.
Well, cool.
So I think, I didn't know if we needed anything more formal to acknowledge his presence.
Yeah, why don't we just?
Who's that, Bruno?
Yeah, why don't we do it, just a motion, I guess we could do just a motion or a man.
Because I think you, usually I think you recognize he's pretending.
Thank you, everyone, we will continue with the really exciting stuff of the agenda. We're gonna head to item 3B, as in boy, which is a public hearing on preliminary environmental impacts determination regarding the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Project L-176748 and L-176747. I will entertain a motion from the council to open the public hearing. Motion by Marx, seconded by Bowring. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public hearing is open, this hearing is for the public who might be joining us and wish to comment on this matter. I will pause for a moment to see if there's anyone interested in doing so. Sensing none, seeing none, expecting none, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by Marx to close the public hearing? Seconded by Bowring to close the public hearing? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed, thank you. Item 3C, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, MS-4 Stormwater Quality Program Update, by our friend Dan Bounds with Baxter and Woodman Consulting Engineers. Mr. Bounds, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
That first line is the ever-popular NPDES, a lot of us see in lots of documents and stuff.
Right. Great, yeah, thanks for having me this evening. The Illinois Environmental Protection Agency requires each year that information on the city's stormwater quality program be presented, and I'm happy to be presenting that information tonight. So the city is required by Illinois EPA to implement best management practices, programs, and activities to prevent pollution from its separate storm drain system for entering our local waterways. Your separate storm sewer system regulatorily is referred to as the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, or MS-4, so this program sometimes goes by the MS-4 program and your permit from Illinois EPA. So the city complies with this MS-4 permit and the stormwater pollution prevention requirements, water quality monitoring that's required, municipal staff training, and program documentation that's required for the public to have information about your program. And a lot more on that documentation, there are several documents that are on the city's website for the public to gain this information and see the, the different programs and elements that are implemented by Public Works and Engineering. The first is the Stormwater Management Program Plan, or it's sometimes referred to as the Implementation Plan, which describes how the city implements the requires, requirements of this program. There's also the Notice of Intent Document, this is the document that contains the commitments to Illinois EPA by the city for this program. And then there are five years of annual reports on the city's stormwater website that describes what the city has done to implement these requirements each year. So all of these documents are available on the city's stormwater website, which is, the website address is on the screen here for anybody who would like to review these documents. So the Notice of Intent, that commitment document to IEP, that's submitted every five years or with each new permit, there's typically a five-year permit term, but we are on the eighth year of the current permit, because Illinois EPA has not issued a, a new permit quite yet. It contains the local program commitments for implementing the requirements. The Stormwater Management Plan is a document that describes the overall organization of the city's departments and how these requirements are implemented, and the responsible parties, which departments and the roles that they play in implementing the pollution prevention program. The annual reports go into IEP, June 1st of every year, and like I said a second ago, the last five are on the city's website as required. So the program has six major elements or program areas, public education and outreach on stormwater impacts, how the public can be involved and participate in water pollution control or, or protection events, the illicit discharge and detection and elimination portion of the program where city staff look for any legal connections or other types of discharges that would not be allowed, and then the construction site stormwater runoff control and post-construction stormwater control, and then lastly, the pollution prevention and good housekeeping operations for, for municipal operations. So best management practices are required, established by the city and required to be implemented for each of these six program areas to protect local water quality. Water quality monitoring is a requirement of the program as well, the city is required to perform monitoring and assessments to evaluate the effectiveness of the best management practices that are implemented, and the city meets this requirement by being a member of the Fox River Study Group and taking part in regional or more collaborative watershed-scale monitoring efforts. The data collected by the, by the Fox River Study Group is available on their website for public review. So staff training is required each year, city of Geneva staff, Public Works, Engineering, and anybody that works in, in the field, that would include training on fleet and building maintenance, parks maintenance, stormwater system maintenance, roadway maintenance, winter de-icing, recognizing hazards associated with illicit discharges or dumping situations, and best management practices for material handling, spill response, and waste management through municipal activities. So training of the city's contractors is also required for anything that contractor may do for the city. So to ask questions or gain more information about this program, it's the Public Works Department, Act 630, 232, 1501, phone number to call for more information on the program. And lastly, like I said, the permit has gone beyond five years recently, Illinois EPA hasn't issued a new permit before the previous one expired, and we're currently on about the seven or eight, eighth year of this current permit, but Illinois EPA has said that the new permit will be coming out this year, and here's a little snippet from their website that says they're thinking March for the new permit to be out, and any new requirements that, that may be in that permit, I will help the city evaluate and make recommendations for how to implement any new requirements. So with that, that's the annual update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the stormwater pollution prevention program that the city implements.
Mr. Bounds works closely with, of course, Mr. Van Gescam, and of course, Mr. Babica, who is here tonight, so any questions for Mr. Bounds or for our director, Mr. Babica? None, and there's no action necessary, we appreciate very much.
Correct.
Your presentation.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion to approve?
Second.
Martian by, motion, sorry. Motion by Alder Person Pashke, seconded by Alder Person Swanson? City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with seven, excuse me, eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent. We jump to item 10, Presentation of Ordinances and Resolutions, item 10A. Oh, excuse me, did I miss one? Municipal bills schmills. Oh, forgive me, I missed that. No, thank you, thank you for that. Municipal bills for payment, we kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills that I forgot in their aggregate for our consideration.
Expenditures total $4,947,759.90.
Mayor Bruno motions, do we approve and pay the bills as read? The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alder Person Bruno remotely and eloquently makes the motion, is there a second? Alder Person Bowring makes the second, any questions regarding the bills? City Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
With eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and two absent, the municipal bills have been approved for payment by this council. Off to item 10, item 10A, Consider Ordinance Number 2024-02, granting a variance to increase the permitted total lot coverage for 946 Sunset Road. All of you should have the summary from the Planning and Zoning Commission, this matter was unanimous, we do have the applicant here as well, if there are any questions for, we also have our friend Matt Busing here as well, from the Planning Department, are there any questions or comments? I was gonna ask that next, well done, that's a, that's a, it was like a tie. We'll get, Swanson with the motion, Bowring with the second, now it's available for discussion, any questions from the council? There were a couple of questions in the packet earlier tonight, those questions and answers were provided and available on the website. We have a motion, we have a second, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, this matter, item 10A, has been approved by this council, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Mrs. T. Item 10B, folks, Consider Resolution Number 2024-30, authorizing change order number one, with Petroleum Technologies Equipment in the amount of $49,000 for city fuel dispensing system upgrades. Bowring makes the motion, seconded by Pashke. Ben?
Uh, the item regards a change order related to the replacement of fuel dispensing systems at Public Works, due to a budget, due to budget considerations, the original pro-proposal included an alternate option to install a canopy to protect staff and equipment from inclement weather. The contract called for the installation of foundations to install the canopy in the future. With the conclusion of other projects, funding is available to install canopy now, and staff is seeking approval to move forward with that, we do have Mr. Landers and Mr. Babica here in the audience tonight.
Questions for Messrs. Landers and Babica? We have a motion by Bowring, a second by Pashke. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The motion has passed with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent. Item 10C, Consider Ordinance 2024-03, Abating the Taxes Levied for the Payments Due Under General Obligation Refunding Bonds, parenthetically, Water Works and Sewerage Alternate Revenues, Series 2021A-B. Is there a motion? Alder Person Marks makes the motion? Alder Person Kassarog makes the second. Mr. McCready?
Uh, the next two go somewhat together, so I'll read this, and then we can proceed. Again, I said the next two items before you concern two different bond issuances, the city annually abates taxes for various bond issues using electric and wa-water, wastewater revenues mainly comprised of user fees. These alternative revenue bonds are required to be repaid by property taxes or user fees. This annual process removes the debt service payments from the property tax bill and requires the bonds to be paid from user fees collected in the electric and water sewer funds, and then join us this evening as we have Finance Director Cruz to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Cruz? If not, City Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Item 10C has been approved with a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent. Item 10D, related thereto, Consider Ordinance Number 2024-04, Abating the Tax Levied for the payments due under general obligation bonds, parenthetically, alternate revenue source, Series 2024. Is there, Bowring with the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Marks, anything else you want to add, Mr. McCready, is this sufficient to what you said earlier? Any questions or comments for Director Cruz? If not, City Clerk, please take the roll in alphabetical order.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
That was in alphabetical order.
It was, did.
Wow, that's impressive. That's, every, seriously? Item D has passed with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent. I had to double-check for those, I actually, alphabetical. Okay, so item 10E, folks, Consider Ordinance Number 2024-05, Amending Title IV, Business and License Regulations, Chapter II, Liquor Control, Section 11, License Classifications, Removing Certain Requirements for the Class A-2 Liquor License. Oh, for God's sake. Bowring with the motion, seconded by Marks, Mr. McCready?
The proposed ordinance eliminates the requirement for separation of alcoholic beverages from other non-alcoholic merchandise within a licensed premise. With advances in technology and point-of-sale systems and their capability to block liquor sales during non-allowed hours, this requirement is believed to be obsolete. There are currently seven licensees affected by the amendment, all of the requirements of the A-2 remain in force, staff recommends approval.
Questions or cons, questions or comments for Mr. McCready? Forgive me, Alder Person Kassarog?
Could you maybe explain it again for me, and, so like, we're talking about alcoholic beverages next to non-alcoholic beverages, right? So like Mountain Dew, alcoholic versus Mountain Dew, non-alcoholic, right? And?
First of all, is there an alcoholic Mountain Dew?
There is, unfortunately.
There is?
Yes.
I, I think what, what you're looking at is just point-of-sale systems and what they're able to block, not block, versus formally requiring to be separated, so I think this more deals with how it's displayed.
Oh, I thought this had something to do with.
Displayed, this, well, no, I think it has to do with how it's displayed in the store, how items are stored next to each other.
It is, or it isn't, I'm sorry.
I believe that's exactly what it is.
It is, this request came to us from one of our larger retailers, you'll be interested to note that the other communities surrounding us do not have this in place anymore, they requested that we would consider also abolishing this caging of certain products during certain time periods, and hence that's why it's before us, this came from a retailer along the Randall Road Quarter.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies it for me.
Liquor-infused Mountain Dew, huh?
I've never had it, but.
Oh, well, thank you. Yeah, but I knew about it, yeah. Anyone else? City Clerk Kellick, would you kindly take the roll? By the way, Bowring made the motion, I know.
In order, then.
In order, yeah, it's pretty impressive.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative? Agreement with Mission Square Retirement for City Employee and 457 Deferred Compensation Plan. Pachke makes the motion, Bowring makes the second, Mr. McCready?
Okay, the item before you will allow staff to execute the agreements necessary to make the change in the city's 457 Deferred Compensation Plan. A 457 plan is a tax-advantaged retirement savings plan that allows employees to deposit a portion of their pre-tax earnings, reducing their income taxes for the year while postponing the taxes due until these funds are withdrawn after they retire. There are no city funds matched, and the fees to pay for this program are paid solely by the employees who participate. Based on review of alternatives and analysis with the assistance of the 457 Consulting Group, staff recommends moving forward with the change to Mission Square. The change will provide lower-cost services and a high level of service to plan participants. Then I'm available as well as administrative analyst Nick Partfilo and a representative from the 457 group is here as well.
Excellent. Questions on the dais for either of those distinguished guests or Mr. McCready? I shouldn't say or, sorry. And Mr. McCready? Alder Person?
This is significant savings for our employees in that I think the administrative costs were, we're gonna save about $57,000 for them.
Yeah, that was the estimate just based on last year's participation alone.
So it looks like a major plan improvement for them, and it's great that our employees are saving for their retirements.
Anyone else? The motion by Pachke is seconded by Bowring, and the vote taken by City Clerk.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and two absent, item 10F has been approved by this council. We jump to item 11, folks, public comment, anyone wishing to address the council's invited to do so? How about new business from the dais?
Just a comment, we had a number of city employees with us this evening, police officers, firefighters, and I didn't know if we had any of our ambulance drivers with us tonight as well. But in light of what happened over the weekend in Burnsville, Minnesota, I think we really sometimes need to appreciate the fact that every day that these people go to work, they're putting their lives at risk, and when you have three young families that are impacted the way that they were, in what appeared to be a rather affluent neighborhood, you know, this isn't 95th and Stony Island, our employees, they owe our, they deserve our gratitude for their service, and with the prevalence of guns in our society, I think that we owe them a double appreciation for their service and their contributions to our community and the safety of our community.
Anyone else? Anyone have an update on the girls' basketball score in Batavia? That alphabetical thing really threw me, that was awesome. Anyone, anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Marx, seconded by Bowring, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks, thank you very much.